Yes, Mr. Clark.
Better.
The meeting is now live and streaming and whatever else it's allowed to do, which is beyond my techno-intelligence. So have a good meeting. Can't hear? It's on. It's on. Is it on now?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got it. I'm glad you're hearing now because you have to hear it when I speak at public comment. Yes, indeed. And that's it? Okay. Okay. All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City, the City of Nevada City Council to order at 6:31 on Thursday, July 14, 2020. And now we are going to do the Niisnan land recognition. Daniella, would you like to read the recognition?
Sure. In the future, I would like to rotate this so everyone gets a chance to speak these really important words.
We've already decided that.
Great. Then, great. Let me do it then. "We acknowledge the Niisnan people are still here among us today, though they are nearly invisible and their story continues to be excluded from history. We understand we are on Niisnan land that was never ceded and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident on Niisnan land, we support the Nevada City Rancharia Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as the campaign to restore tribal sovereignty through federal recognition."
Thank you. All right. And City Manager Sean, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to stand and join me? Right hand over your heart. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Okay. I first like to note to everybody that usually our wonderful city attorney Dean Pucci is here, sitting right here, but he is home today and he's on Zoom because he is a little bit under the weather.
He's at the council.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Dean. Thank you.
Still looks better than me.
But not as bad as the other attorneys.
Gabby, would you like to do the roll call for us, please?
Councilmember CC.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes. Here.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
I'm sorry. Did you say Vice Mayor? Yes, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Here.
Here. Thank you. And so now it's time to adopt the agenda. If there are any modifications, if anybody would like to pull any of the consent items from the agenda, or if we have any recusals to announce, now is the time. All right. Nobody wants to take anything off the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I have a second.
All right. We have a first by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Councilmember CC, which is nice to say.
That's Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Oh, sorry. Oh, oh, oh. I apologize so much. Let me say that again. Vice Mayor Fernandez.
It's just going to take some practice for all of us, I think.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Today, we have a wonderful presentation. We have three items on the presentation. The first is new council introductions, which I am going to give to the city manager to take over.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, those at home, those that decided to stay in the audience. This is your last chance. You can leave now. The doors will close and tell them to me. Just kidding. Thank you for staying. We really appreciate it. And for those that are attending remotely, for the benefit of the community, for staff, for those watching at home, like to acknowledge our city council for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. So everybody knows, but just as a matter of record, serving as the mayor Doug Fleming, serving as the vice mayor Daniella Fernandez, continuing his term as Councilmember Gary Peterson, and the newly elected and sworn in this evening in ceremony, because it's not a secret that they were previously sworn in as well, Mr. Adam Klein and Lucici. So I'm sure this is not all of your first public event, but it's the first meeting of many good meetings to come of this council, so no action needed here this evening other than the picture that we took of the five of you that we already got. If you didn't notice, Gabby was taking pictures of you. We'll do another nice picture at the next meeting so that it can be all of us here when Dean is feeling a little bit better and we can get a nice photographic record. If for another reason, then I can put it in my office for this council for this year. So that's it for that item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have a proclamation honoring our wonderful interim police chief Ted Stack. And I'm going to read this nice proclamation that we have. Ted, could you come on up here? All right. There he is. All right. "Odering the service of interim police chief Ted Stack. Proclamation. Whereas Ted Stack accepted the role of interim police chief for the City of Nevada City on May 1, 2021, and whereas interim police chief Stack served Nevada City during its most challenging staffing situation in modern history, and whereas the interim police chief Stack led the men and women of Nevada City Police Department through the challenge of COVID, of the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas interim chief police, interim police chief Stack, out of a profound sense of service, remained the city's interim police chief long past the original span of service," and we're grateful for that. "Whereas interim police chief Stack has been praised by community members and business owners for his personal and professional approach to policing, and whereas interim police chief Stack will end his service to those who live, work, and play and thrive in Nevada City on July 18, 2021, upon the appointment of a permanent police chief. And now, whereas the city council of the City of Nevada City wished to recognize and thank interim police chief Stack businesses as investors in our community."
Thank you.
I think so. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of, that the city council of the City of Nevada City does hereby honor the service of interim police chief Ted Stack and wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation for his dedication to the city way past his planned dedication on this day, the 14th of July, 2022. Thank you, chief.
You have to say something.
I will.
Please, chief.
With the mayor's permission.
Oh, we would love to hear from you, chief.
Very good. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, Gabby, Dean on Zoom. Sorry, you're not feeling well. Thank you so much for the proclamation, the kind words, the support from everyone here, including past council members, too. I think Dwayne is behind me. Thanks to Erin, too, if she's watching, so thanks so much. So yes, much longer than what we thought in terms of interim, but it was my pleasure, wonderful experience, and I'd do it all over again if we had that opportunity. So it's been, it's been great. So today, tomorrow, happy day, sad day at the same time. Happy I'm going back to the retired police chief status, and that means I can go home and hang out with my family a little bit more, and I have a number of projects that I wanted to tackle before that I'm eager to tackle now and contemplate the future, whatever, whatever that is. So looking forward to it. Sad because Nevada City is awesome. I just love it. I'm going to miss terribly all of you, everyone behind me likely, and the staff at the police department are wonderful. I'll miss them. Public Works, wonderful, everyone at City Hall. I'll miss the foot patrol in the evenings. What a blast. And I've met so many people, created professional relationships and just helping out. Last night's event was just one of many that I attended. Wonderful. And I'm going to miss it. So likely, I'll come back and visit now and then because this is a wonderful place. So once again, mission accomplished. I think we're done and thank you so much, and I'll be heading home tomorrow.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. If any members of the public here would like to say a few comments, now is the time. And if we have anybody online who would like to say any comments now would be the time as well. No pressure.
Yes, no pressure. It's okay if you don't.
All right. Is this not regular public comment? Okay. Don't leave. If any of the council members, new or senior, would like to make a comment, now would be the time.
Chief, thank you so much. It's been a joy to get to know you, to see you out and about. I love seeing you out and about in town. So many shop owners, business people who work in businesses downtown have mentioned your presence and how, how nice that feels, how good it feels to build those relationships. Also, just your report that you put out, you know, the big reason, one of the big reasons you came here was invaluable information and really helped us to decide good directions to go with our police department. So thank you so much for all your work and your charm.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in the interim council, but I feel like I should chime in here only because Ted did me a solid by coming on board at a really rough time. He's always been a consummate professional. I've worked with him in a number of different capacities, chief. I wish him the best that he has life in the future and hope our paths cross again. So thanks, Chief Stack, for coming on board and helping me out and Joan and Sean and the council through a transition time. So it's nice to have some calm water right now, and that you helped us get there. So thank you.
Here, here. Anybody else? Here.
Sure, sure. Thanks, chief. You know, lifelong student of leadership, and you're such an incredible model, you know, of standing tall, walking your talk. Integrity is everything to you. It's a wonderful thing to see. We took this city through a huge amount of change, and as, as we talked last time, we had really good advisors that helped us get through that in the interim capacity with Joan and with you at a time when it was just critical for us to get to the place that we are at now with a new council, at a new threshold, but you did just an enormous amount of work to get us there. And it needs to be remembered and it needs to be acknowledged. So thanks, chief. You've been great.
Thank you.
Lou or Adam, would you guys say no pressure? But you're certainly.
I feel pressured into this. Chief, you did a very difficult job during a very difficult time. I met you minutes ago. Your handshake is excellent.
I've been told that before.
I love him.
One of my father's first cases was in support of the police department in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and he taught me at a very early age the value of good policing, and that is what we have in this town, thanks largely to you. Thank you.
Here, here. You know, I certainly echo everything that everybody said here and on the TV. You came at a really tough time. We were going through a really serious transition and looking for direction for our police department, and we could have gone a lot of different ways. The research and the legwork you did helped us make a really good choice of rebuilding from within and really making the department, you know, a Nevada City-owned and sponsored department. And, you know, the hiring you've done has just been excellent. You know, I was, I was just privileged to meet you and your wife out the other day. I see you out a lot. My, my wife, you know, fell in love with your wife. She wants to have dinner, so that's on the agenda, so coming to. But I also really want to say thank you to coming, you know, you have a choice of where you go once you're retired. And, you know, I know Dean is very persuasive, but you had to want to come here for some reasons, and it's clear why you did because this community is amazing and you've helped make it better. So thank you so much for your leadership, and you've teed it up for our next, our next chief, you know. You really set, you know, you really, really set the table for him as well. So thank you for that.
My pleasure, and he can do it.
Yes, we know that. We know that. All right. And please bear with me, everybody. This is my first day at the, at the.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right. So next, just for continuity, we have an introduction of our new police chief, Daniel Foss, and then I will hand it back to the city manager to talk a little bit about our new chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So passing the baton is usually an analogy, referring to like a relay race, but in, in the police department, it's actually one place you can use the analogy, and it's not an analogy because they literally have batons. I know they're collapsible now. They're not the wood ones like they were when I was growing up that, that looked, looked nice in a uniform and, you know, made officers somewhat approachable, but literally passing the baton. We did a nationwide search for police chief, and I know that sounds a little bit crazy for a city of 3,000 in the foothills of Northern California, but we're really looking for the right fit for the community. And we did have applications from all over the place, including one from outside the country. I don't think they knew exactly what they were getting in for, but a great group and honestly, most cities in California that are looking for a police chief right now are struggling, and many, no matter how much they pay or how big or how small they are, are not finding good quality candidates and are living with serial interns or, or other work. So I feel that we were very both lucky but also strategically successful based on the action that the council took to retain and enhance our police department, I think really, you know, drove in some people's mind the desire to, to come here and, you know, take this department to the next level that the community desires and that the council has opined on. So, you know, Dan ended up being the, the best candidate after a number of interviews with internal and external stakeholders, panel interviews. He had to sit through breakfast with me. I don't remember where that was, Modesto or something like that, halfway between here and where he was. Dan spent the last 20 years with the Madera Police Department, and he most recently was a lieutenant there, also the interim public works director. And so those are kind of incongruent services usually, but it really speaks to the ability to, you know, work outside the silos of policing, which I think is something that is desperately needed in this town. All of our staff wore multiple hats, both literally and by analogy, and Chief Foss will be no different. He'll have to wear a lot of hats, and so I really think that that will help us out. He is an Army veteran. In 2015, he established his own nonprofit, mostly focused on victims of human trafficking and including a safe house for that purpose. Has been married to his wife Lisa for 22 years, so I have you beat by three years, I think. My wife's name's not Lisa, but I definitely have you beat on this category. He has one wonderful daughter, 16-year-old named Vivian, and he and his wife both grew up in small towns, and he's really, you know, part of something that really came out in the interview process was his profound desire to, you know, serve as a police chief specifically in Nevada City, but really in a small town where he can, you know, we're, as a form of government, we're driving a Ferrari here. We can make rapid changes that are positive for the, the city if we put a plan together that's right and execute it well, whereas big cities are driving oil tankers. It's going to take them years and years and years to make those same kind of turns. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a heavy lift for Chief Foss, but I have no doubt that he can do it. He has already moved into the city. His official first day will be Monday. As you saw with Chief Stack, you can expect to see him out and about. You probably already have seen him out and about at events and other activities. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd love for Chief Foss to introduce himself and answer any questions that you might have.
Oh, I would love that.
Hello, everybody, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for having me. I have the unfortunate opportunity here, or I shouldn't be unfortunate, but I am new to the community, so this is a little more difficult for, for me to speak to everybody, so bear with me. I'm very thankful for this. I think Sean said it best, fit is so important. And how I ended up being here is I was coming through on vacation one day, and I could just tell as soon as I walked into this town, like, this is an amazing community. And just by chance, they had a chief opening, and I thought, I'm going to put in and see where this goes. And here we are today. But what's, what's, for me, what's so vital, what I have seen today, is just how much this community cares about each other and about everybody here. I'm coming into an organization where there's a great police department that's supported by its council. I've seen that when I've been watching all the council meetings, and that speaks volumes. It's supported by its community. This is good and bad. Chief Stack did a, Chief Stack did a great job, which is awesome, but if he did a bad job, then I wouldn't have to do so well because then it would just be a lot easier. I wouldn't have to try so hard. So thank you, chief. I guess it makes, I have big shoes to fill, but I'm going to do my best. One thing that I have always loved doing and I plan on doing here is, and I think is super vital for a community this size, is just relationships. Relationships to me are built on communication and trust, so I will always be there for anybody. Trust comes with communication, and once you make promises that you fulfill time and again, then we can establish that. And it's very important for me that the community understands that this isn't a police department of Nevada City. This is Nevada City's police department, and this is something that's owned by everybody here, and we will be the voice and serve everybody in this community. So thank you, everybody. I look forward to this very much. It does feel weird right now, as told by Chief Stack, I'm actually unemployed for this one week of my life, and I was like, oh, this is really odd. So I'm not a police officer again until Monday, so that's, that's new for me. Anyway, is there any questions or anything? It also feels weird that I'm speaking to half the people behind me.
That is weird, huh?
Would anybody from the table or from the audience like to make any comments?
We had lunch today. You're a great lunch partner. Everyone have lunch with this guy. Welcome to the town. I'm really excited to work with you. I think you're going to fit in great. We got to get your family up here. It's annoying that your daughter's better at guitar than I am, but to be expected as I'm not very good at guitar. We're going to work past that. Welcome, chief.
Thank you.
Well, I had coffee with him, and he was a great coffee partner as well, so I would stand by Adam, but great to meet you, chief. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you a lot.
Appreciate it.
I really appreciate the Public Works background as well.
I also had the opportunity to have, spend some time with you this week, and I was very impressed. I'm looking forward to what you can do for our town.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I had the honor of sitting in on interviews, so I am very familiar with your work, and I'm glad you're here, and I look forward to the future of policing in Nevada City.
Thank you very much.
And he gives good phone, too. We talked on the phone, and, and he reached out, and we, we had a good conversation. I just, I forgot to mention something. Well, there are two things. One, I probably shouldn't mention, and one I should, is that on his way out, Chief Stack provided the new chief with a nine-page detailed briefing of all the things that he needed to know, nine pages of detailed points. And I, I really appreciate Chief Stack for, for doing that and you for, you know, listening as well. You know, and also, just in case anybody knows, since he is not officially a police officer, he is currently not armed. So, okay, do that with you, with, with you will, but welcome to the city, and we're, we're really excited to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okey-dokey. Moving on. So public comment. Government Code Section 5495.4.3 provides that any member of the public may address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exception, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concern may be referred to the staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item as well at the time that item is heard. So do we have any general public comment? Paulie, come on up.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Paulie.
Paulie Halsted, 423 South Pine. Have to hold that. "The Committee for Nevada City Historic Neighborhoods District has circulated a petition for the adoption of the Nevada City Historic District Initiative, which includes an amendment to the general plan. This public comment is to notify you of my objection to the adoption of the Historical District Initiative, a deliberate and transparent attempt to avoid compliance with State SB9, and to undermine legislature's efforts to combat the crisis-level housing shortage. I'm providing you tonight with the state law regarding general plan amendments. Most residents of Nevada City were unaware that the petition was circulating and that the initiative could be adopted without change by the city council without their knowledge, thus denying them the opportunity for public discussion and a vote. The provisions of the Nevada City Historical District Initiative violate state law, in this case SB9. Currently, Nevada City does not have a written policy on amending a general plan. I've listed five examples that I'll give you tonight of cities that have a written policy. In lieu of Nevada City not having a written policy on amending a general plan, state law must apply. Given all of the above, it seems critical steps in the process of initiating an amendment to the Nevada City general plan have been skipped. It would also seem that a city council has a legal, ethical, and fiduciary duty to inherit a state law on initiating a general plan amendment and to notice property owners regarding something that could significantly affect their property rights and harm them financially. I respectfully request that the city council not adopt the Historic District Initiative as written, but instead do a feasibility study to determine if changing the general plan would be the best interest of the city. I also recommend staff research and develop a written plan and application for amending the general plan before proceeding any further."
Thank you, Paulie. Lorraine?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Reich. I am a resident in Nevada City now 30 years, and I live at 153 Park Avenue Extension. So I'm coming on the tail of Paulie's speech here because I'm also concerned about the process by which, I understand there is a movement or a group of people here, I don't, the historical, whatever they call themselves, who wish to amend the general plan of Nevada City. So what concerns me is the process. Hold on, I'm just catching my breath here because I'm a little under the weather. The process, as I understand it, is that a flyer was circulated to various Nevada City neighborhoods asking for signature to, asking the individual property owners to okay the initiative or to put it on the ballot. I read the flyer, and it said, this, this initiative is not going to be, it says it will be up to vote. It was very clear. The flyer says, I have a copy at home, that the initiative would be subject to vote by the people of Nevada City, property owners, not just the city council. Well, now I'm coming to find out that there's a possibility that the city council is going to entertain this proposed initiative on, you know, coming, in coming meetings. And so I'm concerned about the process. As a property owner, I have not been duly informed of what this is about. And as I read the state law, I was required to get notice by mail to my home or to be posted on my property. So, so my concern is the process. How is it that this proposed initiative even got written? Apparently, it was written by a private attorney. Okay, people can pay attorneys to do anything. How is it that our city attorney, I hope he's listening, drafted the summary to this initiative, which was, I believe, published in the union? How is it that the city paid our city attorney to do that when, when the process wasn't followed properly? How is it that the attorney has not given you, the city council and city manager, the proper procedure to follow to amend a general plan or to pass an initiative? So I'm concerned about these things because can, can anyone just come and submit something to you, and if somebody likes it, they put it on the agenda, and then it gets voted on, and that's it? That's not the way it should work. So I'm concerned about why city attorney has not properly advised you. I'm concerned about city attorney being paid to write the summary. I'm sure it'd spend a couple hours reading that 20. reading that twenty-six-page initiative, that takes a while to read and digest.
Lorraine, could you wrap it up there?
I'm wrapping it up.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. I just want the state law to be followed, given notice, for the property owners to have an opportunity to be heard. That's what democracy is all about.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public? Oh, Michael, come on up.
Thank you. Welcome, new city council members, as well as mayor and vice mayor, and the new chief. It's an interesting night. My name is Michael Taylor, I've been part of this community since 1979. I've lived in Nevada City off and on, and I have more recently become an advocate of personal and property rights. And I'm a little bit concerned about this initiative, and I have done a little bit of research, and I have to say that I'm pretty impressed with, one, Sean returning my call and spending the hour or so on the phone talking with him. And it's kind of come down to, in my understanding, that we, the city council has four choices in moving forward with this initiative, I believe, August 10th. And I guess my position would be first to ask that you guys do a review of the initiative, and how it affects the community in a positive or negative way. And then, if not, that being your first choice, the second suggestion would be to just simply put it on the ballot, and let the voters decide how it should fall. My concern about putting it on the ballot is, is that this is gonna end up costing the city, I'm not sure what, but there's been numbers thrown out, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, fifty thousand dollars. And the part that concerns me is that, that a group of people can get signatures for something to be put on the ballot that costs the city fifteen, twenty, fifty thousand dollars, when in reality, that it's already understood, more than likely, that even if it passed by the voters, that it's not even legal. So, that part concerns me, that this money's gonna be spent, and there's not a process for reviewing this initiative before it even gets that far. So, I think, I personally would like to see this, see you guys do a study. And I think the study would be able to clarify these points of legalities. And I understand, talking to Sean, that you then are still stuck with having to put it on the ballot. But at least, when it's on the ballot, there's a report that explains to the communities the legality of it, or not the legality of it. I think that voters are smart, and they'll make choices that make sense for the community. It doesn't make sense to vote something in that's gonna end up being an issue for the county legally down the road. So, that's my opinion. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who would like to make a comment? Please come on up now. All right, wait, we have our wonderful city clerk, Neil. I gotta have you.
Introducing new members of other events that are happening in this world today, besides this meeting. On this day in 1789, the French Revolution kicked off the storming of the Bastille. And it's now celebrated not only in France, but even here, in some quarters. And to savor this moment, because this is a rare point of cross-generational consensus. Most of you will understand this, I have a little difficulty, but it's maturity. They may not agree on bangs or gene styles, but Gen Xers, millennials, and Zoomers, Zen, Gen Z will all appear to love nineties music. Today is Pandemonium Day, a day of, which we've experienced, a day of sheer bedlam and utter chaos. If there was ever a wild and wacky, unorganized day, today is that day. So, celebrate it, I think we already have. In 1868, the first patent for the tape measure that we use today was issued. A hundred years earlier, the first version of our mac and cheese appeared in an English cookbook. Thomas Jefferson is credited in bringing mac and cheese to North America. He even had it served at a state dinner in 1820. In 1937, Kraft Mac and Cheese made their debut in the midst of the Great Depression. A box served four for nineteen cents. Eight million boxes were sold in the first year. But to top off the dinner tonight, be sure you have a glass of Grand Marnier, and watch a shark movie to honor Shark Awareness Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. And it looks like our former mayor, Dwayne, would like to make a comment. Happy to see you.
We're gonna keep this simple, I just wanted to come down and wish the new council members luck, wish all of you luck, welcome you. And I wanted to say thanks to Chief Stack for giving us his time and direction, and welcome new chief Foss onboard, and I'm disappointed I don't get to work with him. And that's it. Have a great evening.
We'll find something for you to do.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Okay, folks, is there anybody else from the public here who would like to make a comment? If not, we're gonna check online, if Gabby could go.
Lower. Raise your hand in the lower right-hand corner. Go ahead, Matthew. Matthew Pulter.
Hi, Matthew. Hi, thank you. I wanted to bring up a couple things tonight that are within reach to deal with, and one are the trash cans for prior tucks. Waste management was way behind on getting their new cans in, which now they have, and so they will rotate cans out at no charge to the customers, and those cans are really horrific smelling, you can smell them from like a block away during the hot weather. So, it'd be great if somebody could help those guys take care of that, because they're out there all the time. As well as more and more green trash cans are being left out in places where they weren't before, which is, there's just kind of an eyesore, if you're trying to take pictures, it's really difficult to work around those. As well as the cigarette smoking situation, and the cigarette butt situation in Nevada City, being that the fire hazard is so extreme, I'm hoping we can deal with that at some level. Because it's just been an ongoing problem, and there's just a lot of butts, and all the butts end up in the creek, and so it's a pollution problem as well as a fire hazard. Commercial street looks great. I'm glad that it's all reopened and people can use it, and great event last night. So, welcome new folks, and hopefully can continue on, because it's been, last six months have been a lot of noticeable changes that have really improved the town. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Matthew. Is there anybody else out there in Cyberland? I, oh.
All right, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, excuse me. I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All right, we have council member Peterson first, and council member Klein as a second. Thank you. All right, I'm not gonna read the items on the consent agenda, but if anybody needs to know them, they're right over there. All right. So, where are we now? Standard process, president, council members, second.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'll assume that was unanimous consent for the vote of yes.
Oh, yeah, I have to take the vote, don't I? Because she has, she has to, she has to, oh, hi Gabby. Okay, Gabby, could you take? I'm sorry, it was. All right. I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna get in trouble with.
It could be all in favor aye, or it can be a roll call, your preference, mayor.
All in favor aye? Gabby's like, yes, dude.
And then he would ask for objections, and then, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. All right, we're on to business. The first item on business today is number eight, consideration of a resolution 2022-56, a resolution of the city council of the city of Nevada City approving the appointment of city council members to the internal and external committees and regional bodies for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. And the staff member who's gonna give the report is our wonderful city manager.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of, the room is dwindling, that's okay, that's, you know, people only stay for what they're interested in, but I know there's people watching at home, both on Zoom and YouTube, so I wanted to share the internal and external committee appointments, and briefly touch on what they are. So, for those of you that don't know, the city council does a lot of work and gets paid exactly zero dollars to do that, but in addition to the meetings they come to and the events that they go to, they also get paid zero dollars to work on a whole bunch of committees. So, we break those down into internal and external committees, and the external committees are serving on other bodies, and the internal committees are serving here directly. So, there is one change from what was published in the agenda as far as the structure, and that is, previously, the Social Justice and Racial Equity Committee slash Policing Committee was combined. It was my error, I presume it was combined because we had the same community members on both, but really, the Social Justice and Racial Equity Committee is an external committee, it's also known as the county's Jedi Group, and the Policing Committee is an internal committee. So, we broke those out, and so the committees are, the Local Agency Formation Committee, referred to as LAFCO, that is the body that makes the determination of both the boundary lines and the sphere of influence for all taxing agencies or entities in the city, whether they be cities, water districts, the county, or any other item, we appoint somebody to that. Solid and hazardous waste is another committee that is a combined committee of dealing with our contract with waste management to provide solid waste in the city, and as well as representing the city on hazardous waste activities with the county. The next one is Nevada County Transportation Commission, which is a commission of both cities, in Grass Valley, Nevada City, the town of Truckee, and the county, and there are funding streams that come with that, as an external appointment. The Nevada County Economic Resource Council is an external body that deals largely with economic development in the county. The Nevada City Grass Valley Cultural District, and while we are not appointing on Grass Valley's behalf, it is a shared cultural district, the only one in the state, I believe that is between two cities. So, that is both the Arts Council and the Cultural District appointment, that's external. The League of California Cities Voting Members, you'll note that there are three spots on that, as is traditional, it just goes to the mayor, the vice mayor, and the next senior council member. What that allows is one of those people to levy their vote at the annual conference for the League of Cities, on behalf of our city. The Regional Housing Committee, which deals with housing on a regional level outside the city, including the Western Nevada County Regional Housing Authority. The appointment to our Chamber of Commerce, that's the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce, they hold their board meetings right here in our council chambers, and then the last, the one that was broken out, the Social Justice and Racial Equity as an external committee. And then the internal committees are currently, are Parking, Fire Safety Advisory, and the Policing or Future of Policing. So, the mayor makes, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. City Manager, you forgot the new one that we just added.
Would you like me to explain that, or would you like to?
You could certainly explain.
So.
I thought, I see you were gonna let me do that.
Sure. So, the mayor makes appointments to the committees, we are required for the external committees to adopt them by resolution. So, if the council was so inclined, then your action tonight would be a motion in a second to adopt the resolution, which will reflect the appointments in the body, and will make the changes for the breaking out, as well as the newly added one, and if the mayor would like me to go over them, I can, or if he would like to speak to that.
It doesn't, so, we got a comment from a wonderful community member about Nisanon Rancheria tribe and all the work that Daniela Fernandez has been doing in that effort, and the suggestion was to start a separate committee, so that work could continue, and maybe we would have somebody else on it, but, you know, the conversation was that we would start with Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Fernandez, as the primary person on that committee.
So, with that, I'll just, I'll read through the committee assignments, because we have made some changes since when it was posted, and then I'll do it back to you to.
Can I, can I just make a distinction? I just wanna make a distinction, and maybe this is just semantics, but it is a tribal liaison position, and not necessarily a committee, although I think it fits within the grouping of committees, but just to have that liaison position. Shelley Covert talked a lot about the institutional memory of government, and how sometimes when council members leave, they don't, the Nisanon aren't always brought along if that advocate is no longer on the body. And so, the idea to institutionalize this position, so that there is always someone to represent the Nisanon, has been something that Shelley and I have really been looking forward to, so thank you.
So, I'll read backwards off my list, and that first one would then, it's called on this sheet, the Nevada City Rancheria Nisanon Tribal Liaison. The other external committees and bodies are the Local Agency Formation Committee, or LAFCO, with the primary council member Peterson, alternate council member CC, solid hazardous wastes, primary council member Klein, secondary council member CC, Nevada County Transportation Commission, primary council member, or Vice Mayor Fernandez, my apologies, and alternate council member Peterson. The reason why there's sometimes, for the benefit of those in the audience, why there's sometimes a second primary and sometimes an alternate, where there can only be one voting person, we have a primary and an alternate, and when there can be two people that can attend and voice their opinion, then we have two, a primary and a second primary. Continuing, the Nevada County Economic Resource Council then would be Mayor Fleming, and the alternate would be council member Klein. The Nevada City Grass Valley Cultural District, primary Vice Mayor Fernandez, second primary council member Klein. The League of California Cities Voting Members, as I previously noted, then would logically follow that it's Fleming, Fernandez, Peterson in that order as a primary, alternate, and second alternate, and we do send that to the League of Cities for them to adopt, because they won't let you vote unless you're on their list. For regional housing, primary Mayor Fleming and second primary Vice Mayor Fernandez. For the Chamber of Commerce, council members CC and Klein as primary and second primary. Social Justice and Racial Equity, otherwise known as the County Jedi Group, council member Peterson and Mayor Fleming. The Nevada City Rancheria Nisanon Tribal Liaison to Vice Mayor Fernandez, and the chart shows a second primary to be determined, as the Vice Mayor works through the issues of that liaison position and its future needs. I'm sure the council or the mayor would entertain changes there as needed. And then the internal committees being Parking, primary council member Peterson, second primary council member CC, Fire Safety Advisory Committee, two new members, our newest members of the council, council member CC and Klein, and the Policing then remains the same internal committee with council member Peterson and Vice Mayor Fernandez as the second primary.
Okay, so, I guess we go to public comment now? Is there anybody from the audience who would like to make a comment on this topic? If now, now is, if so, now is the time to make your comments? If not, oh, we have somebody come in? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Welcome new council members, congratulations, Vice Mayor Fernandez. I would just like to say that I think it's a mistake to not include Vice Mayor Fernandez on the Committee for Social Justice and Racial Equity. It's something that she's worked very hard on, something that she's dedicated her personal life to, and I believe that everyone that would benefit from the actions of this committee, it will be a detriment to them to not have her included in those conversations. Someone who is so dedicated, and intelligent, and wanting to work for everybody for the best possible outcome, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment? Okay, can we check with, oh, one more.
Hi, nice to see you all.
Hi.
Surprise. I am also here in support of the, let me restart. I would also like to encourage you to reconsider your committee assignments. I think that this is sort of an odd way to start off the year, largely because. I think that this is sort of an odd way to start off the year, largely because Daniela Fernandez, Vice Mayor Fernandez, has not only dedicated so much of herself to racial justice and social equity, but she is a professional. I think that representation really matters when you are representing people, when you are making decisions in government. This is why we all step forward to be leaders in our community, right? That's why we all get involved in local politics, not because of the money that it pays us, but because we care about our community. Gary, Adam, I love you guys, but you're both white dudes.
It's born that way.
And I know, and there's nothing you can do about it. I, and I think that it's important, unless you've been living under a rock the last couple of years, with all of the big cultural conversations that we've been having in this country, in this community, to not take advantage of a person who not only professionally does this, but also is in a position to represent something beyond older white men in the community. Forgive me, guys, I love you, but that's what you are. I think it's a mistake. And I would like to speak up on behalf of Daniela to say that and on behalf of Adam and Gary as well. Because I think personally, I would not want to be put in a position where I don't feel like I'm in a, like I'm going to represent someone well in the decisions I make. All right, that's it. Thanks for listening to Me Stumbled.
Thanks.
Welcome, guys.
Anyone else? Okay, anybody in Cyberland would like to make a public comment?
If you would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand or ready to form. We do, we have Natalie Coulter, go ahead, Matthew.
Hi, Matthew. Hi, I just want to say with all these different appointments and committees and such, I don't know whose job it is to do the sound and the set up the meetings and stuff, but the sound definitely needs help. The Zoom sound is different than the YouTube sound. And yeah, so hopefully there can be some attention brought to the, just the whole conducting meetings so we can hear them. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, Matthew.
Thank you for pointing that out. And thank you for letting us know about the distinctions into where the sound is better and different. Because I wasn't aware of that. I don't think many of us were. So thank you, Matthew. Anything else? All right. Okay, so I guess I'm going to need a motion to vote on.
Can we, can the council speak?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I apologize, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Fernandez, go right ahead.
Sure, just part of the process, right? It comes back to the council and we all get to.
You're completely right.
Great.
Messed up.
Thanks for the public comment tonight. Thanks for people who wrote public comment emails on my behalf. I am super excited to continue on the Policing Committee, the Future of Policing. I'm excited to be working with the new chief and continue working with Gary. The Cultural District with Adam, I think we're going to do some great things over there. Looking forward to that. Also Regional Housing in the Transportation Commission. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the work I've done for the past two years on social justice and racial equity. First of all, Gary, I served on two committees with you, the Policing and the Social Justice and Racial Equity. And I just want to say that you are a great colleague to work with. I think we did a great, great job on building relationships, engaging the community, writing and drafting a resolution, adopting a Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Mission and Vision Statement, which was adopted by this council as well as the Board of Supervisors unanimously. It made sense for me to be on Social Justice and Racial Equity, quite literally, because it is the work I do in the world. I'm an educator, I'm a consultant, I'm a trainer, both in Nevada County and across the western states. I spent a year and a half dedicated to Color Me Human, a local nonprofit that supports Black Indigenous people of color and LGBTQ folks in Nevada County. I currently work with LGBTQ youth in the county and have a keen pulse on the struggles and needs of people who are part of systemically disadvantaged communities. And I'm proud to have put in the work to earn the trust of Shelley Covert and the Nevada City Rancheria Nisanan Tribe. I have been honored to spearhead adding the, the small gesture of a land acknowledgement to our meetings to establish November officially as Nisanan Heritage Month in Nevada City and to begin the steps of a land back initiative for the tribe. I bring a social and racial and gender justice lens to all that I do in this world. And that includes when I sit at this table and when I'm doing the business of the city. And I will continue to bring that lens regardless of whether or not I am on a social and racial equity committee. So Mayor Fleming, I wish you well and joining Gary in that committee. I look forward to seeing what you bring to this very important and timely committee and work.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate your comment. Would anybody else at the table like to comment on this topic? I, I just would like to, if nobody else is going to jump up, I'll just go.
Just one point.
There you go, go.
No, no, I, I'm mostly satisfied with my appointments. I don't know. I'm gonna do it, but I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. But I, I think it's also important to understand that as we move into our strategic planning process and towards that, more committees are going to emerge. And they, and they may be ad hoc committees, and they may be short term or longer term, depending on what we determine from our planning process. But there's many more opportunities unfolding for us to work together as a team. I just wanted to acknowledge.
I hope there's not too many more committees. I'm already on six and I'm, as I mentioned before, I don't get paid.
None of us get paid.
Sure. You know, except I'm speaking for myself.
Anybody else? Okay, so, you know, I was originally appointed to the Jedi Committee and, and I, I had to get off for, for personal reasons. And, and I'm happy to go back on it. And I think that, you know, as the person who I am, living in, in this town, I, I certainly bring a lot to the table. I, you know, I, I don't brag about all the, the stuff I've done, but I've done a lot of work in this space. So I think that, you know, first of all, I think that most of that committee's work has been done. But should anything arise, you know, that comes up, it'll be interesting to see how that committee unfolds. And, you know, I, I will certainly report back on, on how it works and what's going on if you need to know anything.
That's what we do with committees, we report back.
But you know what? We don't.
I do.
We didn't get a lot of reports from, you know, and this is one of the things I wanted to talk about, just in committees in general. You know, we have some primaries and some alternate on the committees, but I would encourage all of us to go to any committee meeting that we can. You know, one of the things that I noticed, and I think we all heard a lot, at least us, us older committee member, or council members, is that we're not represented at a lot of tables in this county. We don't show up. People do not show up for their, you know, in the past had not showed up for their assigned committee positions. You know, I would get a call from somebody in the county saying, how come there's no one from the city at this meeting? And, and these were important meetings. And so, you know, I, I do think that there were some problems with committee attendance in the past. And I, I hope that doesn't continue in the future. And I would encourage all of us, if there's some reason that we can't go to a committee meeting, let your alternate know, let somebody else know, just have another one of us, you know, attend if we can. And if not, we can find somebody else to attend. So I, I think the committee system is, is a little antiquated. I think it's, it's, you know, some of these committees probably would, could go away or be reconfigured as we go into our strategic planning session. And the strategic planning session is really going to dictate what we do as a, as a council and what we do as a community. And I think that's where the action is, you know. These, these are, to me are somewhat semantic and, you know, people like to, you know, have, you know, opinions about them, and that's great. I think that the other committees that we're going to establish are going to really do the work. And not to say that any of these committees are, are lacking in, in, in the work that they do, but I just think that there's going to be some specific things that are specific actions we need to take with housing, with fire, with water, and things like that, that are really critical, that we need to focus on right now, besides parking, you know. So I, I, no offense. So that's just my two cents. If there's anybody else who would like to make a comment about this, please do. If not, we can move on. All right, I would like to hear a motion to adopt the external and internal committees as discussed.
I so move.
And a second. A second. All right, we have Lou as a first and Gary as a second. We might as well do a roll call on this one, Gabby.
Councilmember CC.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yep.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you, folks. All right, moving on. Number nine on the agenda, consideration, consideration of the city manager's proposed process to develop a community-driven strategic plan for the city of Nevada City, including invitation for participating in work groups from the community. This, oh, I don't read that part. Mr. City Manager, would you care to give the staff report on this one?
Perfect, thank you. So many cities have what they refer to as a strategic planning process that largely develops a list of tasks to achieve in, in any year's time. And while there's nothing wrong with that, and that's something that the city has had for, for a number of years, what it amounts to is, is things to, for staff to accomplish. What it doesn't do is provide an opportunity for the community to weigh in on and for the council to take action on setting a direction for the future of the organization. And while I recognize that the city of Nevada City is rooted in its 200-year history and less rooted in, although very ever-present in its more than 10,000-year history of Indigenous peoples before that, nonetheless, if we want to preserve the things that we want to preserve and improve the things that we want to improve, it will require planning and action on our part. Otherwise, we will be sitting here 50 years from now, well, some of us will be sitting here 50 years from now. Somebody will be sitting here 50 years from now, saying, man, if we would have just started a plan 50 years ago, we probably could be where we want to be. And, and that's the crux of strategic planning. So what I propose is commonly referred to as a community-driven strategic planning process. That doesn't mean that the community is going to make the decisions. Ultimately, the council will make the decisions. But it will give you an opportunity to, to hear from various stakeholder groups, what their thoughts, opinions, and input is on the various topics that will come in front of you through the strategic planning process so that you can make a more informed and arguably better decision. You know, I say this sometimes that, you know, in the city, we have about 35 full-time employees and me sitting in my office making a decision is never going to be as good as engaging the 35 people that work here. We may end up with the same decision sometimes, but that doesn't mean that I'm smart. It just means that we all agreed on that one. So really, the strategic planning process is that opportunity for the council to hear from all the different aspects of the community, whether they be the loud squeaky wheel or the under-voiced, underserved portions of our community. So ultimately, the actions of the community-driven strategic planning process are, we would revise our mission, vision, and values statements. I believe that they are good and largely representative of the city as it exists today. But I will leave that to the council and to the community to determine. And we'll do that by recognizing and looking at the words of action, the words of meaning that are in those statements, you know. Where the comma is, is less important than what the phrase actually means. We'll define the programs that are provided by the city, establish the community's service priorities as well as how the, how the community perceives its service levels. So, you know, it's possible that the city believes it provides really good service in one area and the community doesn't see it as really good. It's also likely that the community perceives an area of service as good and the organization doesn't perceive it as well. So we'll identify those. We will conduct a SWOT analysis or, or strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. People don't like to use the word threats when they're talking about the non-business world. So sometimes they say challenges. But let's just be honest, there's threats to the city of Nevada City that are both internal and external. So we'll identify the organization's critical issues and service gaps, determine strategic initiatives for the long-term processing of the city, develop realistic goals. And ultimately, we'll come up with a strategic plan. The written document is less important than the process of getting there and the process of renewing it. And the most important part is that there's support from the community and from the council in continuing it so that you actually get to where you want to go. It's not just something that sits in a binder in my office that collects dust. I'm, I really, I have done that in my career and I would choose to never do that again, to invest my heart and soul into building a really cool, publishable binder that does nothing. So I really hope that this is a call to action for the community. I would love it if we called that strategic plan Vision 2056, the roadmap to Nevada City's bicentennial. Because in 2056, Nevada City will be 200 years old as an incorporated city. And if we want to get where the city should be by 2056, and if we want to get to where we think this city should be by 2024, we need to make some changes now. Change is always easy in small increments. Change is always, always hard when you're trying to overcome 50 years of non-change in one year's time. So I hope that this plan will allow us to make incremental changes where possible for long-term solutions and where short-term solutions are absolutely necessary, we will have the agility to make those short-term changes as well. So this will involve community groups, residents, business owners, nonprofits, faith-based groups, education and community-based groups, social justice, visitors, everybody and their brother gets a say, right? And we'll say who, or their sister, or their father, or college roommate. And, and we'll catalog who those are because there's weighted value, right? In how different groups perceive different things. So the visitors to the city might have a different opinion of how business works or how policing is done than the residents. And that may be a value in your decision-making process. It may not be, you may, you know, not choose to take those. But so we'll convene several meetings of those groups altogether and we'll go through all of these steps. Then ultimately, we'll take that information and bring it to the council. We'll go over the same content, but you'll have that kind of holistic set of information from the community in front of you to deliberate and go through your process on the topics. Two to three meetings. We will also do it with the entire employee group. We'll also provide surveys and opportunities for people to put information in and in other pathways besides just attending those work groups. You know, always good to hear as many voices as possible. What I generally find, and what most places generally find is you could do 50 surveys or you could do 10,000 surveys, you can never capture everyone, but you can capture more than if you just do work groups. But what you generally find is repeated statements, which is good. If you have, if the community is uniform in their support of a certain thing, that's good to know. If they are all over the place on a certain thing, that's also good to know. So ultimately, I hope this process would, would end in, in us getting there. So I digress, but there's a timeline in front of you in the staff report. It would really start with us announcing, hey, we'd love to get stakeholders involved in this process. Please join one of our groups. You can participate in person or by Zoom in these groups. Please fill out our surveys and then work with the council for timing that you would call at a future council meetings, several special meetings for you to do your work of the city council. So with that, I've said a lot. You all know that I'm passionate about strategic planning. I appreciate that all of you are interested in the process. I also appreciate that you are willing as a council to go on this journey because many councils are not, and many councils are not strong enough or bold enough to say, we, we're going to put it all out there, we're going to write it down, we're going to make a plan, and we're going to hold ourselves accountable for the future of the city. And I love that the city is willing to do that. So with that, I would appreciate any feedback, any direction on the process and your support in moving forward.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this topic? If so, now is the time. If not, is there anybody in YouTube land who would like to comment on this topic?
If you would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand or hand to the right. We do not miss a minute.
Thank you. All right, to the table. Gary, you're a process guy.
Would you like to?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have a lot of thoughts.
I know.
So.
Which are good.
So, you know, Daniela has her calling, I have mine. And mine has been setting strategic direction for organizations for many, many years. It's, that's the work I do. I spent this morning delivering. morning delivering two and a half hours on how to survive in constant change through setting of values and setting of vision. It is essential where we are standing at this point in time to pursue a process like this. We are standing, as you heard me say earlier, at a new threshold. We have done a lot of change. We're starting over with key positions. We now need to set a direction going forward. The city entertained what they called strategic planning in the past. I was familiar with their consultant who did that. And actually, what they generated was a task list, and when it got really good, it became a capital improvement list. But it was not setting strategy. It was not looking forward. It was not asking or answering the questions of how we, as a community, self-determine the future that we want. That's what this is about. I also really, so, I read through this process. I could get nitpicky with it. I won't, because, you know, I mean, this is what I do. But I support this process completely and entirely. The idea, I said, we like democracy a lot, and, and we, I currently am a bigger fan of it all the time. But, and remind you guys that these oaths mean something. I might just drop that in there as well for our new council people. But, but the deal is, we cannot accurately represent all of your needs. The idea that citizen representation, you elect us and we represent your needs, is a great idea, and it works really well for a lot of things. It does not work well when establishing the needs of an entire community, for all the reasons that Sean articulated. One of them is, you know, we can't see it all. The other thing is too, is just the simple idea, if we believe that we're the only ones with good ideas, we've got a real problem, because everybody's got a good idea. When I ran for election in this, my idea was to crowdsource the wisdom of this community. I live in a very wise, caring community, and I think that we can do a great job of self-determining the future we want for our community. Daniella and I stepped out with the policing and had the conversation, and came back with some great information about the kind of policing that our community wants. Now we need to expand that and look forward into a new future. Change is, you know, the speed of change, the pace of change continues to accelerate. It's just insanity. It's not going to let up. It is our values and our strategies that will get us through these difficult times. When we lose structure, when we start to lose shape, we have our foundational pieces of how we agree to be together and do this work. And that's what we're going to get out of this plan, and that's exactly what we need right now. So, I totally support it. In case you couldn't tell, I'm even kind of excited about it. But I think this is the next really critical, important step for Nevada City going forward.
Thank you, Gary. That was wonderful. Adam, would you like to give us some comments?
I was going to say everything Gary just said. I'm going to be learning as I do, but I'm really looking forward to this. I think it's a great opportunity for us to make necessary changes, and, you know, I'll just do what Gary does, I suppose.
That's always a good idea.
Nothing to add. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Daniella, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You can call me Daniella. That's my name, too. I, Gary, thank you. I'm glad this is your calling. I'm glad we have different callings. We can bring different skills to the table and strengths. I cannot emphasize enough how much we need to incorporate climate change into every piece of this plan, particularly because it's focused on 2056. The Young Group, the Nevada County Sunrise, I'm sure many of us have gotten emails, you know, they're referring to the general plan, which is one thing, but the strategic plan, I think, is really important. I'd like to emphasize them as a group that we should specifically reach out to, because they are young people in this community, working towards building a brighter future for future generations in terms of sustainability, resources, that sort of thing. We know the effects of climate change, particularly here. We are a high-fire area, and that's just one thing. Water, fire, and there will be more things. So, I just think at every single point possible, every decision we make should have some component of climate change, climate justice consideration.
Thank you, Daniella. That's definitely a great suggestion. One of the reasons I liked Sean was because he was one of the first guys in interviews who pointed out that what we had on our website was just a task list and not a strategic plan. That's the first thing I noticed, and, and I, you know, I, we had so much else going on at the time. That was the last priority that we had to deal with. But the fact that we're getting to a true strategic planning process where we can articulate all the things that we think, and the public thinks, should happen and need to happen in the city that are feasible, that will get assigned, that will get tasks assigned to them, that'll get funding assigned to them, that'll get people assigned to them, and they will happen if we do it properly. And I think that the city manager has laid out a really, really good process for doing this, and, you know, if Gary approves of it, you know. And, no, I'm serious. Gary, we talk about this all the time. I was going to have you do a strategic plan for one of our organizations, you know. I wrote a strategic plan for the county, and it was one of those strategic plans that's sitting on a shelf somewhere. So, I understand that, too. There has to be a will within the governing structure to adopt that plan and execute that plan. And I think that's what we have here. You know, we may disagree on a few things, but, you know, I think we're pretty unified on loving this town and wanting to make it better. And, you know, now we have a structure to get there. So, I'm really excited about this process. And even though it's going to take some work, and it's going to take some time, and, you know, a lot of us work, you know, it's going to be, you know, a little bit of a lift, but I think it's going to be well worth it. So, I'm very excited. And I think that's it for me. Everybody's commented. No more public. Turn it back over to you. You don't need anything?
Don't need a motion. I'll take the direction, and we'll move forward. I'll bring a resolution calling for special meetings at a future date, and we will look to release the public portions of it early next week, and get people involved, including the Sunrise Group and anyone else that wants to air their voice. And even the people that don't want to air their voice, I want to hear it, so that we can share it with the council, so they can make the best decision. So, thank you for that, Ms. Mayor.
And one other thing, to Daniella's point, I mean, if any of us have any constituents or any groups that, you know, should be involved in this process, please bring them to the table, so that they can be included.
Well, I also think, on that same note, whatever outreach is going out, you know, some of us have different ways of reaching different constituencies. You know, Adam and I are both on social media, maybe more actively than others. People might have email groups or whatever, and so if we can get those materials to help blast them out, that would be helpful.
You know, via all channels, too. That's a great point, because half of our, you know, I'd love to have an email address for every citizen in town, just so we could communicate a little bit more effectively with them. But I don't think that's going to happen. But we do have about 800, so, you know, we can certainly work on that. So, I guess if there's no vote needed on that, we can jump into the city manager, what, the water? Jump into the water.
It is hot outside.
All right. This is one of Gary's areas of expertise as well. Number 10, consideration of the 2021 Consumer Confidence Drinking Water Report. And the staff member who's going to be giving this report is our wonderful engineer, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. So, we've distributed the Consumer Confidence Report. It's for water treatment. And the purpose of this report is to be transparent and accountable, and also to inform the public about how our water treatment meets or exceeds standards, which are set forth by EPA and state water board. So, this report's done annually, and it was mailed, and it was also made available on the website, and with a link included in our newsletter. So, just briefly, the report is, includes information about our source water, our levels of contaminants, many of which are non-detect contaminants, in compliance with those regulations I mentioned. So, it's just meant to provide community trust and satisfaction in the water system. And, and I can describe more about our water treatment system if you'd like, but just wanted to briefly give a report about, about that Consumer Confidence Report, just so people know that it's available, know where to get it. It's on our website. And, and it not only is for this last year, but the previous year's reports are also available.
Wonderful, Brian. Thank you. Could you just give a little synopsis of where we stand? I read the report. It looked good, the stuff that I understood. If you could just give a little synopsis of where we are now and where we were, you know, in previous, you know, maybe five years ago. I mean, I think we've made a lot of progress, right?
Yeah, the water quality has always met standards, but our water treatment system has a lot of, a lot of things, too, you know, a lot of variables. And we just have a really good crew right now, led by Mike Fadua. And so, it's, right now, it's a really efficient system, and we're not losing much water with our backwash system. And there's a lot more efficiency in the treatment process with where chemicals are added and where they're, where they're monitoring everything. And it's, because it's more efficient, we're purchasing a lot less water this year than we were last year. So, we're, we're purchasing water from NID that is approximately half of what we currently use, which is pretty good for July. And so, we're, you know, we're in pretty good shape, and every year's different. But, you know, we're, we always kind of rely on that purchase of raw water, June, July, August, and into September. And that's been going on since before NID was a district. We would purchase water from the canals, canal systems. So, it's not something new. The city's always done that. And, but this year, we didn't purchase any water in June. We started, or toward, like, last week of June was when we started. So, it's, it's operating really well.
And last year, when, I thought, one, I thought last year, we started earlier, a lot earlier.
Yeah, much earlier.
Purchasing water. So, this year's better. That's great news. I guess we go to public comment now? Is there anybody who would like to comment on the topic of water and the quality of our water? Okay. Is there anybody in Cyberland who would like to comment together?
Hi, Matthew. Can you unmute yourself? I'm there. Hey, yeah, on the topic of water, I know it's not drinking water as it sits in the creek, but eventually it is for somebody. And Deer Creek is really the headwaters. You know, we're right up against Tahoe National Forest, comes out of Scotts Flat, and then, once it gets to town, it starts getting abused pretty heavily, and even more abused even below town with some state-involved regulation going on right now with a private citizen that decided to use a tractor really recklessly. As well as the runoff of the, what's coming down the drains and going directly into the creek, a lot of municipalities around the world have used drains and such to strain the trash out that can then just be easily dumped out versus going way down into the stump and cleaning them out, which never seems to get done, even with the new construction on the Commercial Street project. If you look down in the drains, they're all full of really nasty stuff, as well as plastic trash. So, when we talk about water, I look at all water as drinking water. And when I see it being abused so heavily by so many people, it's sad, because eventually, like Los Angeles and other places, we are going to be using our sewage for drinking water and cleaning it, of course, to standard. But until that time comes, it would be nice to just take care of what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks, Matthew.
Is there anybody else up there?
All right. And I apologize, Mr. Mayor, Mike Fadua, your chief plan operator, would have been here this evening, but he had a family emergency that took him to Southern California. So, obviously, Brian is very well, got a great background on our entire system of puddle forks, water, wastewater, streets, storm drains, everything there is. The real intent of this was to get back on track with presenting this information to the community. As we move forward, we will bring you more reports on changes that are made at the wastewater treatment facility. And as was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Peterson, I'm quite certain that water, water resiliency, and all things that tie to water, which includes fire preparedness, will be an outfall of strategic planning and likely require a committee of the council to be able to really dig into those items so that we can move forward. Our water and wastewater systems are, to Brian's point, we have a great team that's making them run, but they are on somewhere between 90 and 130-year-old infrastructure. And so, we have a lot of work to do in that regard to maintain it and to keep it to be as good a quality as it is today.
Thank you. Would anybody from the table like to comment?
So, this was, this report is required, right, by Water Board?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, and not, I mean, it's a great report. I went through it. I appreciate that I got it at home.
Yes.
So, you know, it came to my house, so my wife could say, what is this? And, but, you know, it's a good report. And I, you know, having some familiarity with 20 years of the wastewater treatment plant, we've come a really long ways from when it was trying to fall into the creek 20 years ago. So, things have really improved, but I think Sean has made an excellent point. We're all struggling with the age of our infrastructure and what we need to do to keep it moving. So, there's a lot of work to do here on the resiliency. And for those who don't know, our drinking water primarily comes from Little Deer Creek, not Deer Creek. So, there's a significant difference. That's where our water rights are, and that's where we get our drinking water. So.
Thank you, Gary.
But thank you. Good, good report. Looks good for her. Daniella, you want, you got anything? Lou?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thanks for staying till the end. All right, folks.
So, if I could, with your indulgence, if you could, a motion and second to receive and file the report, I would appreciate that.
Who did we receive and file the report?
A second.
All right. Now, first by Vice, the Vice Mayor, and the second by Councilmember Klein. I know, we're going to vote now, but just checking. I've just, I was been told to tell Gabby who's first and second. Yeah. All right. I think we can do this by, you know, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. All right, now we're going to jump into the wonderful city manager's report.
I will be very brief. Thank you for indulging me this evening. Thank you so much to the new council members, to the existing council members. It was great to recognize Chief Steck. I think that was probably the very minimum that we could do to recognize him. But staff and others will be thanking him tomorrow and throughout the rest of his time here, which is very short.
What about the statue? The statue didn't get ordered?
Yeah. And we got one that kind of looks like Rocky in Philadelphia, you know, but it's in that awesome uniform that he's wearing now, not this, but we'll put a tie on it, so, okay. Thank you to.
I'm a virgin with the sunglasses and the button down.
When is that? Tomorrow?
What's that?
When is?
Two o'clock.
2:00 PM here.
And thank you to Chief Foss for being here and joining our family here in Nevada City. And I'm very excited about what the future holds for the city, and for those watching virtually or in the audience, you know, I'm, this is my fourth month with the city, and I've met a lot of people. I still have a lot of people to go. I stopped counting when I met 700 people.
Oh, my God.
So, you know, but I would like to meet everybody that has some interest in the city, so give me a call, come by. I think you heard this evening, some people say that they had talked to me or met me. They might not have liked what I said, but everyone should have the opportunity to know their council members, and certainly to know me, whether they like my words or not. So, thank you, council, for this evening. And we'll get the good picture at the next meeting when Dean's here, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, it's now time for council member and Vice Mayor members' reports. Daniella, would you like to go?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay. Gary?
Let's see, I witnessed from a distance the tennis court lights the other night. I think. I think Councilmember Cece was there. And they're getting there. They improved. We're not there yet, but but it did improve. So it was, it's good to see that the work is ongoing. I agree, Commercial Street's looking great. And I don't think I have anything other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Last night, I was at a memorial for John Daly, who was a great guy. He might have sold you your house. But more than that, he would have described himself as a traveling photographer and a father. And a few weeks before that, I was at a memorial for Don Baggett, who was the choir director at the high school when I went there. And for a lot of us, a really important figure in the community, musically and beyond. And then the dual losses of Saul and Mikhail more recently. I just, what those two guys brought to the town culturally can't be overstated. And losing them both so close together was really rough. And when I think about what they brought to the town, it wasn't out of altruism or it wasn't out of personal gain. It was just they made this town a better place by doing what they love. And I think that's something all of us can do. And so I'm thankful and I hope all of you are thankful that your time in this town intersected with their time in this town. And anyway, anyway, the arts, to me, the best export of this town is the art and the music. And I know that probably the most, the most lucrative export was probably the weed. And the most abundant export is probably gossip, but I like the music best. So I'm just thankful for for all of those guys. And anyhow, thanks.
Thank you, Adam. That was very heartfelt. I really appreciate hearing that from you. Lou, would you like to say a few words?
I must say that the second visit of my city to Nevada City, my sister to Nevada City is going much better than the first when she seemed to bring Wisconsin-level Blizzard to the town.
She got there on that day.
She got there and stayed here for a little bit longer than we thought. I was very happy to see the Hot Summer Nights take off as well as it did last night. And I am so psyched that Sweeney Todd opens tonight. Yay for the performing arts.
Yeah, I think, you know, I was at, it's actually, I've been corrected. It's Summer Nights. It's not Hot Summer Nights. I guess that's a Reno event. So we have Summer Nights and it was probably one of the best-attended events that I've seen. And it had a lot of younger folks. We didn't have the tour buses from Roseville, not that we mind tourists at all. But it was, it was, it was, it was more of a burner crowd, you know? We had the fire. The fire show was just amazing. We had pretty much our entire police force out in force and representing and looking really good. And it was, it was just a really wonderful day. I sat up on the balcony and just, it was just, it was just wonderful to see our town thriving so much. And walking on Commercial Street to see people using it in that capacity at an event like that, you know, Brian, you got to be proud of what you've done over there. Everybody who's been involved, I think a lot of us have been involved with that. And so it's really turned out amazing and it was just a beautiful night last night. I wanted to say one little random thing and it's really random. But, you know, my son's in Little League, so I'm in Little League and we do all the Little League stuff. And I was announcer for the All-Star, one of the All-Star games where my kid's team got beat pretty badly. And but we, they do a 50-50 raffle. I don't know. It's a thing where you go around and you get half the pot. And so we, you know, a friend of ours was collecting money. It was a $200 pot. And the person who won it was Bob Sanchez, or one of our own Public Works guys. And, and, you know, I made a comment that, you know, which I was told to make, that sometimes people donate the money back to the Little League and, and, you know, and of course, Bob did it without even thinking. He donated the $100 that he would have won back. But I went up to him afterwards and I said, dude, I hope I didn't pressure you into that. And he says, no, I've been involved with Little League. He was a manager. He told me his whole story. It was really beautiful. And it really meant, you know, he got a, you know, got a little ovation for, you know, for giving his money back. And I just wanted to recognize, you know, Bob Sanchez for that wonderful gesture and just being a great, you know, staff member here. That's all I got. If there's nothing else, am I missing anything?
I move that we adjourn.
Hey, all right. All those in favor? We're adjourned.